Hello.
We're good. We're good. We're live. Good evening and welcome to the May 24th, 2022 Verona Board of Education Public Meeting. The meeting is being called to order and it's 7:06. If everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The reading of the meeting notice. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the open meeting session that the Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its annual reorganization meeting held on January 5th, 2021. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona City of both times, the Star Ledger, the Township of Verona, and the VEA. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. The Verona Board of Education operates under a consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have an item poll to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public and press. Mr. Cruz, can you please call attendance?
Sure.
Mr. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Bay.
Yes.
Mrs. Drapi.
Here.
Mrs. Prisco.
Here.
Mrs. Ruski.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll say here. I said yes. I forgot my second cup of coffee today, so.
We're glad you're here, Jim. We do have Dr. Fernari presenting the school performance report and HIV grade report, so we will roll right into that.
Good evening, everyone. The presentation that I'll be giving you this evening is, the content is on the the 2021 performance report that was released by the Department of Education for all school districts in the state of New Jersey. Please know the data that is in this report is based on the 2021 school year and prior years, not current year. The other thing to note is this template is one that was shared by the Department of Education for school districts. And there are going to be certain areas of this report that due to the fact that the COVID-19 pandemic, you know, it impacted school districts' ability to collect certain data. There will be blanks in some of the areas, and then there's new information that we'll also be working on. This is just a screenshot of what the report's homepage looks like on the Department of Education website. And here, there is a link that is currently active on our own school district website where you can see the entire report for the district as well as the the reports for each individual school. They're also available by following the same link. Okay, as I said, COVID pandemic did impact a lot of the data that was previously available in these reports, so you're going to see that throughout the presentation. But the department wants us to emphasize that these reports are not intended to to be more than a snapshot of what is happening in school districts and helping, you know, it's also intended to help districts look at their own data, analyze that data, and make improvements. In 2021, there are some data notes, again statewide assessment data is not going to be available. Growth data is not available. There are some accountability measures that aren't going to be available. However, there are others that have been added. Some, this is a slide that depicts an example of the impact that COVID-19 had on some of our data that is going to be reported. So for example, you know from Dr. Miller's presentation in the fall that the AP Scholar information, when compared with the prior year data, so this is 2019, 20 and 2020, 21 compared, you'll see in that first chart on the left-hand side that there was a drop in some of the distinction information that was available. And if you look at the chart on the right-hand side, you're also going to see that same data that there was a drop from 2019, 20 to 2020, 21. This is not new information. Dr. Miller provided this for the district earlier in the year. So these are some of the things that are found in this report. Things like demographic information and school climate and environment information, college and career readiness information. You're going to see those areas that were left blank or impacted by the pandemic. They are asterisks there because those are assessment pieces that were not administered. Some things that are new or enhanced in this report. College and career readiness information has been expanded. There's an expanded section in the report itself for staff data. There is new in the report is apprenticeship data, which had not previously been reported. And then there are links within the active report that you can go to on the state website, which you access through our website. That'll link you to start strong assessment results and some other information that is pertinent to student assessment. Oops, sorry about that. Okay, this is just a look at our enrollment and demographic data. So again, this is not this year's data. These are the three prior years. And you're going to see that in the 2018, 19 school year, the district's enrollment was at 2,229 students. In the 2019 to 2020 year, that went up to 2,263 students. And last year, the 2020, 21 school year, the district enrollment was 2,159. As just as an aside, based on enrollment reports, please know that our current school year data is 2,175 students. So a slight increase over last year. You'll also see the breakdown of economically disadvantaged population, which we have none reported in those three years, students with disabilities percentages that are listed. We also have our English language learner percentage listed here. We have homeless student percentage, students in foster care, military connected students, and migrant students. So the percentages, this is a comparison over three prior years, not the current year. Okay, I'm not going to say a lot about student growth because there's no data to compare our student growth to with the state assessment. I'm only going to say that at some point, the student growth percentile may come back. We just haven't got that official information from the department. But the last student growth information that we received would have been in the 2018, 19 school year. Here in the median student growth percentile, you'll see that in 1819, which was that last year that was reported. We had an ELA or English Language Arts median student growth percentile of 49. And in mathematics, 46. So the acceptable range falls within the 45th and to the 65th, I believe it is. So you're going to see that our data compared to statewide median student growth in that comparison of, you know, if you count, you don't count this year, three prior years ago, was almost at the state level, just a little behind in math and one, one degree below in language arts. Statewide assessment results, again, these are things like the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, which our students currently take. The dynamic learning maps, which are an assessment that our special needs students who are not taking NJSLA participate in. And that's actually more of a portfolio type assessment and access for ELLs as state assessment for our English language learners. Okay, statewide proficiency, you're going to see again that in 1819, that was the last data point that we had. So our English Language Arts proficiency rate is 71.4 and in mathematics was 51.9. You'll also see our participation rates below, along with our proficiency rates. And the bottom row in that chart shows you where the statewide proficiency levels are. So Verona's proficiency in language arts was above the state proficiency, as was the mathematics rate in that year. And again, this is old data. You've seen it before. Same here, the language arts trends. This is only 2018, 19 data. You've seen this before as well, so this is not going to look new to you. But if we had had multiple years, you would have seen, you know, perhaps a green and a blue bar next to each of those burgundy ones. But since we only had that, that one year of assessment data available, that's all we have. And then math, same thing. This is old data that you've already seen. We're just required to go over this with our public so that you know that we are paying attention to these. Again, same thing with science. Science scores come in four levels, levels one, two, three, and four. And so you're going to see our fifth grade, eighth grade, and high school assessment data here from 2018. Now, those were a lot of empty spaces. And so one of the things that we've been asked to do is to share with you some of the assessments that we are using locally. So we're not just ignoring assessment altogether. We're trying to make sure that we have methods to, you know, check in on our students and see how they're doing. So the, the DRA, which is a diagnostic reading assessment, is given to elementary students in grades one through four at least two times a year, fall and spring. Sometimes we administer a winter if we have students who need a little bit more monitoring. But typically, it's the fall and the spring data. And that again, it's a diagnostic assessment. It's not a formative or summative assessment, meaning that it gives teachers information about where students are at a specific moment in time. But it also gives them an idea of how far above or below grade level expectations they might be. And then teachers use that information to teach. We're also required by the state of New Jersey to screen all students for dyslexia in first grade. And so we do an extensive amount of dyslexia training for our lower grade teachers. That's required by the State Department and it's, there's a two-hour requirement. In addition to our dyslexia screening, we have staff members who are trained in a number of other methods, most prevalently Orton-Gillingham. And we also are training, as Dr. Moriello has shared in the past, we are using the letters program and we're going to be training a number of teachers in that. Now with the Orton-Gillingham program, we currently have, I think what we trained everyone, we ended up with 18. So I think we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 17 or 18 teachers currently who have taken two-year training in Orton-Gillingham and are certified. We're training additional staff and we are also going to train staff members in the letters program. The other assessment that we wanted to make note of is our math, map growth test. So the, the map assessment is something Dr. Miller has mentioned a number of times, both in education committee meetings and also at the board table. This is an assessment for reading and mathematics in grades two through four. Winter and spring, middle school began administering the map assessment for grades five through eight in the spring of 2021. So for the 2021, 22 school year, we're going to be able to analyze the growth data internally based on the assessment data that we gather through the map growth assessment. Okay, college and career readiness. So this information talks about PSAT, SAT, ACT performance. And this is also during the 2021 school year. So you're going to see the things that are highlighted in green are where Verona students have scored, have an average score that's higher than the state average score on that particular assessment. Or have a benchmark that is falls at or above the state benchmark. So you'll see that the PSAT, NMSQT, reading and writing falls above the state, as does the benchmark. The math is not. It is slightly below. The SAT, reading and writing, as well as the SAT math is higher than the state average score and the state benchmark. And we also have math, SAT falls above the state average score and the state at or above the state benchmark. And by, you know, a significant amount in each of those areas. The highlight, the, the data that's highlighted in yellow is where we are equal to the state assessment score, average, and benchmark. And that falls into the ACT reading, the ACT English on the the assessment score side, ACT math falls slightly below and the ACT sciences is the same. Now, if you go to the, the at or above the benchmark, however, you'll see that both English and science ATC, ACT scores are above the state benchmark. So, you know, there's a mixed bag here. A lot of it is good news. And, and again, this is a year old, this data. So here we have some information about other areas of college and career readiness. We, now you're going to see two columns, a school column and a district column. Because we only have one high school, then you're going, you're going to see that those data points are identical for the school and for the district. The far right column shows you the state percentage. So percentage of 12th graders that took the SAT in high school, we have 49.1% in 2020, 21. The state percentage is 45.4. Percentage of students in grade 12 that took the ACT in high school, our students, 19.8% of our students took the ACT in high school, 8%, 8.8% at the state level. 11th and 12th graders enrolled in one or more advanced placement or international baccalaureate course. Now, we don't offer international baccalaureate here in, in Verona, but we certainly have a robust AP program. 69.7% of our students participate in 11th and 12th grade were enrolled in that year in one or more AP course. And that's as opposed to 35.7% at the state level. 11th and 12th graders enrolled in dual enrollment courses. We have 9.4% that year that were enrolled in dual enrollment and at the state level, 22.3. So that's an area for us to explore and we've talked about that and about enhancing the, the courses that we have and the participation. Another area that we've talked about enhancing is the CTE concentrators. And that is only point one, not one, but point one percent here in Verona as opposed to 11% at the state level. And the number of students earning industry valued credentials, which kind of ties into that CTE concentrators piece. We had no students in that area and the state has point nine, not 9%, point nine percent. And the number of students earning the seal of biliteracy and we had no students enrolled in that program. Whereas at the state level, there are 4.95%. So just some areas for us to explore, to enhance, and you know, we've been having those discussions certainly. These are the advanced placement participation areas. So participation in one or more AP course, our districts, again, 69% against the 35%. One or more AP exam, 59.8% in Verona as opposed to 27.2% at the state level. And one or more AP exam with a score of three or higher, 37.7% in Verona and 17.9% at the state level. So again, we're exceeding the state. There's room for growth and this is a year old. So just so that you're, keep that in mind. Okay, college and career readiness, so CTE participation. Completing only one course in an approved CTE program. Now, don't forget that's Career Technical Education, CTE. So the district, again, we saw this data that it was point one percent. And at the state level, 7.5% CTE concentrators. We just looked at this data, but it means completing two or more courses in a single approved CTE program and/or completing the entire CTE program. So there's our data there and we just saw that on a previous slide. Now, SLE is participating in a structured learning experience, which is the work-study based program. We have a district percentage of 24.2% as opposed to the state at a 2.9%. So, you know, we, that's an area that we, if you recall the budget presentation, we are enhancing our work-study program for both regular education and special education students. Okay, these are more participation numbers. They all pertain to high school level courses. And I say that because you'll see Algebra I on there and you'll see geometry on there. And so if a student in the, the middle school was taking a high school level course that year, they end up in the, in the count. So Algebra I, we had in 2021, we had 179 algebra takers, 149 geometry takers, 170 Algebra II takers. And as you go along, then we had 46 pre-calc, 110 in calculus. Am I doing that? Yes. No, 46 in, I'm sorry, I skipped over the 110. So it was 110 in pre-calc, 46 in calculus, 110 in statistics, and then other types of mathematics coursework was 484. Science, you're going to see a similar breakdown with biology. Now, we had no one taking Earth and Space Sciences. It's not part of our curriculum because we have environmental and physics and we've split it out differently. So biology, we had 294 participants. And then chemistry was 172. Earth and Space Science, no students enrolled. Environmental science was 121 and physics 118. Social studies, you're going to see, I'm not going to read all these numbers, but you can see the numbers that are here. You'll see a very large part of the pie is US history because it combines US one and two. So that orange slice is 357 students because we're talking about, you know, two grade levels of students who are in that course. On the next, to the right, you're going to see world languages. And so there are a few zeros there because there are some languages that we don't offer. The greatest majority of our students were enrolled in Spanish that year. And you'll see Chinese and you'll also see, let me see, that is French. Yes. So as far as that's concerned, you know, we have some zeros there because we don't offer all of the languages in the array that are, that are described here. Okay, computer science and information technology, you know, a lot of districts have different named courses. So the courses that are here are things like computer programming, principles of computer science, computing systems, other computer science, networking, information systems, and other IT. So we still, if you look at the, the chart, we have computer programming is our largest piece of the pie. And our smallest at this point here looks like it is the computer, you know, program, principles of computing, of computer science. So you see that we have a robust computer technology program, but it's not quite the wide array that the state measures. Visual and performing arts, our two largest pieces of the pie are, of course, music and fine art or some kind of an art course. And then we also have a small 2.4% in a drama program. We do not offer dance. Okay, here's where it gets a little confusing. So the State Department has always had requirements, as you know, for graduation. Now, in the state of New Jersey, our graduation requirements include both course requirements and a graduation assessment requirement. During the pandemic, there was an executive order put out in January of 2021 that waived graduation assessment requirement for any 12th grade student who had not yet met the graduation assessment requirement, but had met all credentials based for, based on curriculum attendance requirements, right? So that's the New Jersey piece plus the pandemic thrown in. So here's where it starts to get interesting. There is now also a federal graduation rate calculation. Now, the difference between the state of New Jersey and the federal calculation is in the federal calculation, we are now required to separate out our students with IEPs who are not following that previously stated graduation protocol. And that means that in the 2021 school year, and I'm going to read this because this, this is why, you know, it needs to be a little clearer than I'm, I don't want to generalize this. So in 2021, a separate federal version of graduation rate is to be reported in the school performance report that will not include students with disabilities as graduates in the numerator if they have been exempted from meeting either the state course requirements and/or the attendance requirement for graduation per their IEP. So they're included in the denominator, but not the, not the numerator. Starting this school year, 2022, students with disabilities who do not meet the state's graduation assessment requirements by demonstrating proficiency on one of the required graduation assessments or through the portfolio appeals process, but instead meet alternate graduation requirements in their IEPs will also not be included as graduates in the numerator when calculating the federal version of the graduation rate. So you can imagine that with this moving target, school districts are going to be hard pressed to explain to the public that we have a New Jersey graduation rate and we have a federal graduation rate. And that's all tied to federal funding. So that does not change what the actual graduation requirements are. Yeah, it's interesting. So here, here's what state looks like over the last three years. So we've got 96.9% of our 2018, 19 cohort, our graduating class of 2019, 96.9% of our cohort in 2019, 20, and 99% of our 2020, yeah, 1920. So it was 18, 19, and 1920. And then the 2021, now I've circled the 2020, 2021. That 99 is going to be the important number for you to look at. And also the 90.6 on the state level, that's where you're going to see the difference when I show you the next slide. Now, we've got something that is a four-year graduation cohort rate and a five-year rate. So any students who don't meet graduation requirements in four years, we have some students that stay the extra year in high school and they have, they're part of a five-year calculation for graduation rate. So now we've got a different number of years and we've had this for a while. So a different number of years that are being reported. And we also are now going to have a state, state versus federal. So I'm going to show you that in a second. But please know that even of the five-year cohort graduation rate, we were at 96.9 in 2020, 21. Okay, now remember that number 99 I showed you just a second ago? Now circled in blue, you're going to see how the federal graduation rate affects the New Jersey graduation rate. So we went from 99, this is the same students, same graduating class, same school year. 99 in the New Jersey calculation changes to 96.5. Ninety nine in the New Jersey calculation changes to ninety six point five in the four-year cohort. It didn't really affect the five-year cohort all that much because, or at all in this particular year. Because these are students who are with us for that extra year. And those are typically students with IEPs who are, you know, are able to stay with us, you know, longer before they graduate. So we, in our district, that five-year cohort rate didn't really change for the federal. But it did drop our four-year cohort rate. So you know, in the future, as districts are reporting these, these numbers and figures out to the public. It's going to be really important for the public to understand the difference between that state and federal rate. You're also going to notice that it was ninety point five, I think, let's just go back one second. It was ninety point six for the state. Under the state graduation rate and the state goes down to eighty eight point five with the federal. So. Keep our fingers crossed that we get that message out correctly. That's, it's going to be confusing. Now, there are graduation pathways, as we know. And the majority of our students in the two thousand twenty twenty one school year, eighty two point two percent of our students. Met the graduation pathway that included statewide assessments for English Language Arts. And if we drop down below the thicker line in the middle, we're going to see the eighty one point seven percent of our students graduated. Using the statewide assessment requirement for mathematics. Now, that's compared to fifty nine point eight and fifty nine point zero percent statewide. So the majority of our students are following that state assessment path. We also have, if you look at the next row below state assessment, you're going to see substitute competency assessments. Seven point six percent of our students participate that way as opposed to seventeen point one percent at the state level for Language Arts. And if we go below the thicker line, substitute competency assessments, six point six percent in Verona. As opposed to sixteen point five percent is the state percentage. So fewer of our kids use that pathway. Portfolio appeals, we did not have any in Language Arts or Mathematics in two thousand twenty one. The state was point six percent in Language Arts and point five percent in Mathematics. Alternate requirements specified in IEPs. And that means that the students didn't take an approved assessment. That is the assessment, you know, they didn't, they had another method of showing, demonstrating proficiency within the IEP. And that in Verona was seven point one percent for Mathematics. And if you flip back up above that thick line, it was six point six percent in Language Arts. And then requirements waived under Executive Order two fourteen. Now, let's not forget that was for students who tried the pathways that were presented to them and didn't pass any of them. But it was only during last school year. That didn't apply to any other school year. We had three point six percent in Language Arts with four point six percent in Mathematics of our students. And at the state level, it was eighteen point six for Language Arts and nineteen point nine for Mathematics. So again, you're going to see most of our students went through the traditional pathway. And a few method requirements under some of these alternate pathways. Okay. This particular slide shows us a little glimpse into our post-secondary enrollment. Now, I want to make sure that everybody understands that there are a couple of the ethnicities that are noted that have an asterisk. And the asterisk means that the cohort size in that particular grade level, in that particular class, over that sixteen month period. The cohort size was too small to report. And it wasn't that we didn't report it, the state didn't give us the data back. Because as we know, when we've seen other assessments, if we've got the population is too small, it's too easy to identify students. So they don't give us that data. So our total population, ninety one point four percent of the class of two thousand twenty one. And ninety four point one enrolled in post-secondary education program. Either a two or a four-year school within sixteen months of graduating from Verona High School. We look at the state, it's seventy three point seven percent. You'll see that the ethnicities, white, Hispanic and Asian native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. Are also reported while our black or African American population, American Indian or Alaskan native population. And and two or more races were not reported to us because those populations in that class were too small to measure. As, and now this information comes to the state through something called the National Student Clearinghouse. And so that organization collects post-secondary data and makes it available to school districts. To, so you can kind of get a sense of how your students are doing out in the great wide world. Doesn't tell you students by name necessarily, but it gives you these, these percentages back. So in the state, you'll see that our enrollment in post-secondary education. Within sixteen months of graduating from high school. For the most part exceeds by quite a lot the, the state percentages. Okay, now we're going to switch gears just a little bit. You may have had this explained before, but it's worth another explanation. So there's something called the chronic absenteeism calculation that the state does based on data. That they collect from each school district. Now, school districts have to report our monthly register of percentages to the State Department. And this information is, is part of the, the uploads to NJ Smart and it becomes part of our student data system. So chronic absenteeism is defined as being absent for ten percent. Now, if we have a hundred and eighty day school year, ten percent is eighteen days or more of the days enrolled during the school year. A student who is not present for any reason, whether it's excused, unexcused, for disciplinary action. Any of those reasons is considered absent unless permitted by state statute or reg, or, you know, regulation. So the slide I'm going to show you is going to look a little appalling when you first see it, but there's a caveat. So when you take a look at that and think, think about that definition when I show you this slide. You're going to see that in pre-kindergarten, in that school year in two thousand twenty one, twenty three percent of our pre-kindergarten students. Were deemed chronically absent. They were absent eighteen or more days of school, twenty three percent of that tiny population. As we go across in all the grade levels, we have very, very low percentages of chronic absenteeism, one percent, three percent. No students, two percent, that goes across in that fashion until we get to twelfth grade. And you know, I first saw this and I'm thinking to myself, what did they throw into this calculation? And then it hit me, capstone. Students are not present on campus, they're not counted as being. Absent for any reason, excused or not. So even though it's excused for our seniors, they exceed the eighteen days. So, and that's just the way the state calculates this, this thing. So don't panic. They're doing great things. I was, I had the opportunity to visit some of our capstone students last week. And the presentations that they gave were fabulous. So they're, they're really doing wonderful work out there. But I'm not too worried about that. Okay, so statewide teacher demographic information, this slide does not contain Verona data. Does not, okay? So the top bar graph shows you student breakdown by ethnicity. And it's, you know, if you look at the colors, I know it's a little hard to see, but if you look at the colors and compare them statewide. There are forty point five percent of the student population, the demographics that, that they are. Are registered as white. You look at the teacher calculation at the state level. And that teacher calculation in the white category is eighty two point nine percent. So those are pretty big differences. And there are similar discrepancies when you look at Hispanic and black and Asian, et cetera. That's how the state looks. The Verona School District data is a lot more aligned. It's not perfect, but it's a lot more aligned. So in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty twenty one school year. We had ninety two point eight percent of our teaching staff was white. Eighty one point nine percent of our student population was white, so much closer in percentage. Hispanic population, three point nine percent of our teaching staff was registered as Hispanic. Where we had nine point three percent of our student population. Our black population, two percent of our teaching staff as opposed to point six percent of our student population. Asian is two point eight percent teachers and three point nine percent student. And then the other three populations, we had no staff members in the native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander, American Indian. Or or Alaskan or two or more races listed. However, we had point three percent, point two percent and two point four percent respectively among our students. So while the, the alignment is not drastic and we can still look to. You know, make some adjustments there and it doesn't necessarily mean that this year's data is exactly the same as last year's data. But if you compare this to what I showed you with the state. We're, we're much more aligned than, than our, our state data looks. Okay, this is student safety in the district, violence vandalism, HIV and substance offenses. This is all another piece of data that, you know, these are data points that we have to report to the State Department. Now, you have to also remember that two thousand twenty one, the data is going to be skewed. Because it was during the height of the pandemic and we were in school, we were at a school, we're resuming, we were doing a whole lot of things. So the numbers here are, they look very low. They will not necessarily be this low in future, nor were they this low when everybody was in school all year. So keep that in mind. And I'm not, it's, it's not really helpful to us to look at the state numbers. Because we are much, much smaller than, you know, a large school district might be that, that that might be more useful for. If you look at our harassment, intimidation and bullying number there, please remember that these are confirmed or affirmed. Cases as opposed to all reported cases. And you know, we have HIV investigations that are on almost every agenda. So that number is going to be high, but when you look at the affirmation of a case, that's going to be, you know, a different number. So that'll be something in future when you, you look at these numbers again to consider. And these incidents are per hundred students enrolled. So there were point five six per hundred students enrolled in Verona. There were point two three per hundred students in the state. Part of that is because we have a much smaller number to work with and the state number is much higher. Okay, student support services. Now, on this slide, we have ratios to look at. So we have students to teachers, so according to, and the way they collect this data, teacher doesn't mean. The classroom teacher that your child has for homeroom or for science. What it means is every single person that's considered a teaching staff member, counselors. I mean, they count counselors differently later on, but it includes all of, you know, administrator, everybody. So students to teachers, we have twelve to one, twelve students to one teacher. Doesn't sound like the size of most of our classes, but that's because there are more adults baked into that figure. Students to administrators, a hundred thirty five to one. Teachers to administrators, eleven to one. Students to library media special, library media specialists, pardon me, seven hundred and nineteen to one. Students to nurses, three hundred and sixty to one. Students to counselors, three hundred and eight to one and students to child study team, thirty six to one. So again, those ratios are inclusive of, especially the teacher to student ratio is inclusive of others. You know, more than you would think as far as the classroom teachers are concerned. The report, when you look at it, is very robust. This is really the, the end of the presentation. But I encourage you to click on our link on our website. If you really want to go in, there's, there's, there are two versions of these reports. There's a summary report and a detailed report. The data that I shared with you this evening is found in the detailed report. So if you're really interested and you know, you want to dig in a little bit more, I encourage you to do that. The state also provides some links to additional information on their website. So this presentation will be posted on our website tomorrow. And we will be able to, you know, you'll be able to click on those links live. So board members, if you have any questions, I'm perfectly happy to answer them if I can. There's a lot, I apologize. Sure, we can do that. Yeah.
Yeah, so I had a question, Dr. Fornari. So in the report, you know, for a student to be listed as, you know, economically disadvantaged, their household income would have to be. For four household members, less than forty seven thousand dollars. And I see that we, we listed zero percent for three straight years. Now, you know, just by looking at, you know, comparable school districts, I think we'd all agree that Caldwell is, is kind of very similar. The last few years Caldwell was listing their economically disadvantaged rates at, maybe one second. Caldwell was listing theirs at seven point four percent, next year eight point nine percent. And the following year, five point two percent. When we look at Cedar Grove, we also, I think, all agree is comparable. They're listing their economically challenged at about one or two, one point two percent and then one percent and then one point five. Now, what I'm getting at is that, you know, this number is not just about, you know, free lunch or partially reduced lunch. This number is going to have a substantive impact on our state aid. Like, that's a big, big, big part of this formula. And I kind of just, I kind of believe that we have maybe more than zero percent of our kids that were, would be in a household incomes at that level. So I guess my question is to Dr. Fornari and Mr. Cruz. What can we do to, to kind of make sure that we, we really get the most accurate data? Because not only will it help these kids, but it'll also bring in more money for our district if we're reporting data that's one hundred percent accurate. I'm not saying it's not, but it, it does seem, it seems a little off when, when Caldwell's jumping it, the almost nine percent one year. And when we're zero, because I don't think the towns are that dissimilar.
Okay, so one of the things, and, and you know, we know in school districts. That it really depends upon the reporting of parents, you know, we, we provide the forms. One of the things that we can ensure is that, you know, those forms do come in multiple languages. So giving people access to a form that makes sense to them if they're, if they're a household that speaks another language. But. We almost never are able to capture everyone. Because, you know, I've had conversations in other places, not here, but I've had conversations with people saying, I'm not filling that form out. Even though they could definitely, you know, use the assistance that comes along with it for very personal reasons. But, you know, we are doing, and I think we, we continue to try and encourage people. If there were. I think if one, another piece is, you know, reaching out to some of those districts to see if they have had success. But one thing that I know that we're going to be doing, and I mentioned it, you know, Mr. Bilaj was. One of his projects was to bring, and he brought this back to us, we have our parent square information. So that information, that, that platform helps and does translate into whatever language the person would like to receive the information. It'll translate into their native language and then when they send information back to us in their native language. So that's miraculous to me and I think that that's going to help in one way. Mr. Cruz, I know you did a lot of looking into this when we were talking about the National School Lunch Program, right?
Yes, so, so one of the things, and I'm glad you mentioned, uh, Dr. Fornari Parent Square. So we are working closely with Mr. Bilaj on this, on the technology side. We, we do have an application that we're looking to incorporate on our website. That will allow us to provide the application in multiple languages. So when the parent actually goes on to fill out the lunch, the free and reduced lunch application, they'll select the language of, of choice. And that automatically will kind of like download the application in that language. But they could really quickly fill it out and, and submit. really quickly fill it out and and submit. So hopefully, I think, providing that first level and then getting the voice out, ensuring that the principals are communicating with their school community, along with the SCA voicing that out to the community and also working with our local community center. Because I know that they're they're also a great partner and and a a place of resource for Verona. And especially for those families in need. So I I, to your point, I think that's crucial to be able to capture that data. And 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 if folks are not filling that application out, we won't be able to get that.
Appreciate that. Because I think there's, I think there's really two pathways to go with this. I think if if you're not, because if you do the National School Lunch Program, then everyone's going to have to fill in that income disclosure. So you'll have that data there. And what I'd recommend we possibly look into is we know that one of these comparables, Cedar Grove this past year opted to do the National School Lunch Program. I'd be very interested to see if, because we know there was a school that did not have a National School Lunch Program one year, and the very next year they did, what their percentage of low income ends up being in that one year, that did it rise and did it rise substantially? And then what would be the dollar amount that they got additionally in state aid, had it been, had they not done this? That's one part. But if the district doesn't want to do the the National School Lunch Program, then I think what the district really needs to do, and I think you hit it, was was get the word out. Because I I think it's fair to say that it's something that was never really promoted by the district, right? And it it's a win-win because it's going to get the kids what they want, but also get the district additional funding to, you know, to to use for these kids and for other district projects. So, you know, email blast, YouTube, whatever we have to do to get that, as many parents to participate as possible and sell on it, that like, we all win when when we write, when we fill this form out, then I think either of those options work. Thank you.
Just a quick update regarding the National School Lunch. I know that, so last year, basically all schools nationwide had the opportunity to enter the National School Lunch Program based on these federal dollars post pandemic, just to support. Fortunately, for next school year, the USDA didn't extend that funding. So that window, that opportunity to kind of like say, okay, free lunch for everyone, it's no longer there. So unfortunately for Verona, because our percentage is not high enough, we we won't be able to participate in National School Lunch. But as we always do, the board does sponsor a hundred percent free lunch to all students that qualify for free and reduced. So that's something that we'll continue looking at providing. But we're we actually won't be able to fully participate in the National School Lunch Program because of that.
I understand that. I thank you for letting the community know that. I I just think if if we look at, we'll, we might see how many, how much extra dollars we could have had, because had we, the Cedar Grove bought us really good data locally for us, so. But yeah, but you know, it's unfortunate, we don't have that option anymore. But I think, you know, the more we can push, the the better it gets. But thank you.
So so note that I'll definitely look at the the comps and especially looking at Cedar Grove as an example, because they they actually took advantage of that opportunity. And then there were some pros and cons in it. And my my actually conversation with the BA at Cedar Grove. And then also like to see how they actually kind of pivot from there for the next school year. So it'll be interesting to kind of like see the data on that. So I'll I'll share that out.
I mean, and Mr. Cruz, you've you've done a very good job from the very beginning of this conversation in taking the feedback given by the public and reaching out to our local faith communities, the community center, and working very closely with the town to get the word out already. And you know, instantly, we saw an increase in the number of applications. It was really almost instantaneous. Once you got the ball rolling, which was, you know, within the first two months of having these conversations. So, I mean, I think the word is out there. I'm looking at our website. And it does say like meal application. I'm just wondering if maybe there's for someone who's new to the district who may need, you know, those opportunities, who may need to fill out the paperwork. I don't know if that's a hundred percent clear. It's in our registration paperwork and those instructions are in there. And I know it will be done in multiple languages, which we get the squares started. That may just be another app, because when you go and you go under parents, there's nothing here that says like income-based application or something like that. That's a little bit more specific. So just a suggestion. Thanks.
I I one thing, I guess, and and maybe because the numbers were flying by me when you kept throwing them out there. Regarding the SAT, something that sort of caught my eye when, and and maybe this was impacted by COVID. I think I saw the percentage of of students that took the SAT was at forty-nine percent, forty-nine point one percent. Yet the number of students that went to two-year or four-year colleges were at I think over eighty percent. So I'm wondering the correlation between the fact that we had COVID and a lot of the universities or colleges weren't requiring SATs impacted that amount of students taking SATs or and or ACTs. But I was tracking the SAT number, but because I thought that number was low, considering how many students take the PSAT. And then I thought it'd be more in the seventies or eighties for the SAT. So I just want to throw it out there.
Yeah. And and again, this was last year's data during pandemic too. So we'll look to see what this year's data will look like.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'd be curious to go back a couple of years. What was the SAT percentage in two thousand seventeen?
And I think you mentioned, Mr. Day, that a lot of colleges waived the SATs during the pandemic. So it's it's interesting. Are there any other questions in regard to this performance report? So now we have a second report, which is the HIV grade report that Dr. Fornari will.
And that's going to be much shorter. Each year, as you know, our HIV numbers are reported to the state of New Jersey through the form of a self-assessment. And when that self-assessment is done, the information is gathered then by the state and they validate or verify. Once the scores are validated and verified, we are then required to report those numbers out to the public in a public meeting. And then we will post that report on our website. That's also required. So the categories that are measured regarding the HIV data gathering, HIV programs, approaches or other initiatives. And so schools then do the self-evaluation about, you know, regarding that particular piece of data. Training on the board-approved HIV policy, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information and skills, HIV personnel, school-level HIV incident reporting procedure, HIV investigation procedure, HIV reporting, and then all of that information, each of those categories is added up and each school then receives a grade. So the grades that were reported, and please know that the maximum number of points with the max sum grade that a school can earn and their self-reporting, right? So the maximum number is seventy-eight. Verona High School was rated, they rated themselves at a seventy. Brookdale Avenue School rated themselves at a seventy-one. FN Brown rated themselves as a seventy-three. Forest Avenue School rated themselves as a seventy-five. HB Whitehorn Middle School rated themselves as a seventy-one. And Lanning Avenue School rated themselves as a seventy-two. So there are particular criteria in each of those categories that the committee that looks at this information and and works on it, the HIV specialists, the principals, and anyone else they bring into that, that completion of that report, that data gathering. It's, it takes quite a while for the data to be gathered, disaggregated, and for the scores to be determined. And it's based on specific criteria under each of those categories. So things obviously have been verified by the state. That information will be posted on our website tomorrow as is required. And that's really the extent of my report tonight on this. So if there are any board questions that I can either answer or get answers for you from the schools, I'd be happy to do that.
No questions from anybody? All right. Thank you, Dr. Fornari.
Thank you.
And we're keeping you on the floor here with the superintendent report.
Actually, sorry, I turned my microphone off. Actually, the you've heard from me quite a lot tonight. So I'm going to consider all of that, my superintendent's report, with the exception of, and this is really going to introduce, more introduce a piece of Mr. Cruz's report. Unfortunately, we learned right before this meeting this evening that there was another school shooting in Texas at an elementary school. At the time the meeting began, we didn't have a whole lot of information about this. You know, our hearts go out to those families and that school district and the folks that work in that school. The data that's coming out is is, you know, it's heart-wrenching. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we reemphasize and reiterate to all of our families and to our staff, our administration, just how important it is that we continue to be, you know, we don't want to make school scary for kids, but we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to keep our staff and our families safe. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Cruz's report with that, unfortunately, very sad news, because he has an update on our procedures that I think is important for you to hear. I also have already been in contact with the Verona Police Department. And they are, as always, ready and willing to help. And we plan to have police presence at our schools tomorrow, just to make sure folks know that there is this extremely strong connection between our law enforcement officers and agency and our school district. And, you know, we have never ever had an instance where they haven't been extremely responsive. They they care about our district. Theirs, their children attend our district. I mean, it's really a, it's a blessing to have that kind of strong relationship between law enforcement and the schools. So I thank them for that. And Chief Kieran and Joel Martin, Detective Martin, have always been, you know, I I can't name everyone, because there are some, you know, all of the the officers there, they're also very responsive to us and wonderful partners. So, Mr. Cruz, I'm going to leave it in your hands.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a few updates for the business administrator report tonight. First, I would like to provide an update on finance. In tonight's meeting, we have the March and April Board Secretary Treasurers and Budget Transfer Reports, and they're all in agreement. We also have our health insurance renewal with AmeriHealth Public Employed Trust for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three year. The renewal represents a four percent increase compared to the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two. And it it's, it remains competitive in the current market, and it was actually the best proposal vetted by our brokers, Brown and Brown. I also want to highlight that we're promoting a new wellness program with AmeriHealth for our staff, along with a wellness fair that will most likely take place for all our staff in the fall. Last week, Dr. Fornari shared news regarding some challenges that we experienced early last week when it came to the air conditioning in our district. This was quickly addressed by our maintenance team and contractors before the middle of the week. As previously reported, we still have one coil compressor unit at Lanning, which services five classrooms. And and that, basically, because that unit is down, those five classrooms were not receiving air conditioning. At this time, the replacement part is is actually still in back orders, right now delayed three to four weeks. In the meantime, our team quickly implemented portable AC units. Those were ordered last week, and I'm happy to report tonight that all those classrooms have those units in place today. This will allow those students and 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 staff in those classrooms to be in comfortable climate until the new replacement parts arrive. Thank you all for your patience as we enter the warmer weather and we fine-tune our new HVAC system. In light, as Dr. Fornari mentioned, this was not something that we, I had planned to share in tonight's report. But in light of the recent school shooting in Texas, I want to assure our school community that security remains a priority for our administration. In an emergency situation, communication is key. And that is why we use Share 911 for our lockdown emergency communication. All students have access to Share 911 app and text notification at Verona High School. District-wide, all Verona staff have access to the communication tool, which allows us to receive important communication and notification, along with Verona Police Department. Our strong partnership with the Verona PV and the FEMA Run Flight Hide Active Shooter Training is ongoing, and we conduct lockdown drills throughout the the school year. In addition to Share 911, part of our security enhancements this year with our securities grant is Lens. Lens stands for Lockdown Emergency Notification System. Lens allows our schools to alert everyone during an urgent situation immediately. The press of a button in our schools can automatically initiate a lockdown, evacuation, or shelter in place during an active threat or other emergency. Strobe lights will be added outside of the buildings and hard-to-hear areas to notify folks on site and that we're in a lockdown situation. As previously scheduled, this new enhancement will be installed next week and completed district-wide before the end of June. This concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Does anybody, any board members have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I just want to clarify, when we say active shooter drills, I know as a teacher, I know what that is, right? Lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. You go to lockdown, you do, or it's different. You know what I mean? Like, every building has their own, or every district does it a specific way. There are not actually people walking through the building pretending to be gunmen, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification, because I know I could imagine as a parent who doesn't experience that on a monthly basis, like the teachers do, that that's, they hear active shooter drill, and that's something that they visualize. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
If I could jump in, you're not allowed to use like fake blood in a in a drill. And next year, we're, districts are going to be required to have school security, like represented, parent representatives, to make sure that the the level of, I guess, fear is is not excessive or appropriate for a grade level. I think it's great, all the things districts, Verona and every other district's done to look to make the kids as safe as possible. And, you know, the communication is good as possible. And it's, it's just really scary that there are people out there that you know, would think to do vile things to children. And, you know, it's terrible.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And we are going to move on to our committee reports. Community resources did meet. Mrs. Prisco, do you want to start on that?
Mrs. Freshy, yeah, so we did meet, starting with the DEI committee. Jody Shipper with Grand Rivers is actually in New Jersey and working here this week with, meeting with the groups. So she met, I believe, last night and Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Let's see, we had on May fourteenth was our first annual Mental Wellness Festival that was held. And we were all in attendance, and it was a great event. Mr. Moriello, Dr. Moriello, I'm sorry, did a fabulous job, along with Rutgers Behavioral Health. It was very well attended, and it was really, and Cedar Grove was also in attendance. So it was very nice to have the communities together. And Scott Chesney did his presentation, and it's always heartwarming to hear Scott's story and listen to him speak. So that was wonderful, a wonderful event. We also discussed candidates forum discussion with the League of Women Voters, because the election is coming up in November for Board of Ed. And we talked about getting in touch with the League of Women Voters and the Conference of SEAs to possibly move that date for earlier, because now with people voting by mail, voting earlier, they don't have the opportunity to come to and watch the candidates forum. So we're in discussions with that. Let me see, hold on one second. Speaking of the November election for the Board of Ed, the petitions for anyone that is interested in running, they have to be in by July twenty-fifth to the the county of Essex. We are in the process of doing our board self-evaluation. And as for superintendent evaluation, Mrs. Freshy wrote that up to submit on Dr. Fenari. Through, I had made notes and now I'm just going to go back and make sure I'm not. We discussed possible changing of our July meeting. Date. And let's see. Dr. Fenari met with the police interns this past week and I'm sure that was very delightful to watch those four students in action. And let's see, am I leaving anything out, Mrs. Freshy?
No, I think you hit all the main points. I just want to give an update on the transition. We have Ms. De Giuseppe will be starting officially on July 1st. So she did submit to the board her 100-day entry plan and Dr. Brown of HYA, the recruiting firm, has been helping her get that into shape as well as Dr. Fenari has been great at making sure we are going to have a seamless transition. And Ms. De Giuseppe also has been in the district. She's begun to meet with the Administrative Council, Central Office, some of the principals. So she has been spending some of her time off in our district. So we are on track and excited to get that started. I just wanted to just add a little bit color onto the evaluation process. So New Jersey School Boards as part of CUSAC, it used to be mandatory as part of that to do an evaluation. So Boards of Ed always evaluate the superintendent, the chief school administrator, because we do have an interim. I reached out to New Jersey School Boards and they suggested to do more of a summary outline of Dr. Fenari's time with us. So I, they sent me a template. I've begun to compile all the things and initiatives that she has worked on with the district, with our administrators. And I am waiting for Dr. Fenari to get back to me with some of that supporting documentation. Once I have all that, then we'll set up a date and then we'll discuss that in confidential with you. And as far as the board self eval, that's not mandatory, but we've done it consistently in the past as a, as a past practice. And it just gives us an opportunity to reflect on a new team. We have new members all the time. We have new administration coming in in July. So that just gives us an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves on where we think we are, where we can improve, what we did well over this past year and what we'd like to do going forward as far as setting goals. So we do have that going on as well. And the only thing I think, Mrs. Prisco, that we spoke about that you did miss, I'm looking into my notes, is we talked about we, we do a lot of policy updating and that historically has been coming through our education committee. So one of the things that we want to discuss going forward is to create another committee that's strictly dedicated to policy because that, one, there's a ton of policies and it's an ongoing situation. So mostly Strauss Esme, the, the firm that sends us the templates, if there's any legislative updates, they'll send it to us automatically. Sometimes things are put into motion based on community input. Sometimes a situation will arise and whenever anything happens, the first place as board members we do go to look is at policy. And sometimes we've done relatively good job at keeping updated and some things not so good at being updated. So a discussion to create a committee dedicated strictly to that is something that we might want to consider. And that can be if we want to, when we make our personal board goals, to make a goal over the next X amount of years to go through all the policies and do that in a methodical ma- manner. And then like Mrs. Prisco said, the July 26th meeting, I'm going to be traveling. I think Mr. Walker is going to be traveling. So we're looking at possibly changing that to the week before, which would be July 19th as our first meeting. That would be the first meeting with Ms. De Giuseppe. I did float that date out on her. So she is available for that date. So we could all check our calendars at a later date and we could do straw poll and look at that. And then we'll report out on a definitive date at our next meeting for that. Are there any questions or?
So maybe I misunderstood, but I guess the evaluation that we give to our superintendent, that's going to be between the board president and the superintendent to do the other board members have input?
We could all, once I get the whole summary completed and Dr. Fenari gives me her supporting documentation, I'll put that out to all the board members. So you all have an opportunity to look at it. I'll float it back to Dr. Fenari. So she has an opportunity to look at it. And then when we sit in confidential, all of us can have a nice candid conversation on how our year went.
I also just wanted to update the board. Back in January, right after reorg, I had reached out to NJ SBA because part of our dues pays for a policy wellness check. Essentially when NJ SBA will go through every single policy and sort of evaluate what needs to be updated, what is already updated and what's completely outdated. And it, it'll do that against not only Strauss Esme, but also sort of what other districts have been looking at and based on how long policies have been going without any update. And I heard back from them immediately and then crickets. So I reached back out about a week ago and said, hey, remember that thing that you said you would do and crickets? So I reached back out again and I said, I need you to do this now. And she said, okay, no problem. So now we're just waiting at this point for the, for the report. I'll follow back up with her again by the end of this week, just to make sure that they're actually doing what they said they were going to do. Because I think that's a really important first step. I agree with potentially making a policy committee as well as making that a board goal. And again, that's something that, you know, we go through part of the board evaluation. But I think that, you know, just like we've talked about in sort of best practices as reevaluating our third-party contracts. You know, and doing that systematically, which I think we're sort of still working on like a schedule and how to do that. Hopefully we can get that done, you know, by the end of the summer, having a set schedule on that. I think that's a really important step in policy wellness overall is systematically looking at our policies and chunking that, you know, throughout the years and setting a goal by the end of two years, then you know, three years, so on and so forth. When we want every single policy looked at and updated.
To add on to that, Sarah, I think we just, I agree with you. Everything you did, I appreciate your advocacy with NJ SBA. I think we just kind of have to understand though, that like the way that they're structured is, is going to make it so that we, it's hard to fully, fully, fully rely on them for these kinds of services only because you know, the Essex County rep, she probably has what 18 or 19 or 20 different school districts. And if she's doing a superintendent search or she's doing a strategic planning or, or, or a policy review, they don't get paid a dime extra for that, right? So I'm not surprised that we're, we're, we're not getting the hustle that we would get if they were fairly compensated for something like that. But I do think we might have to do more of it ourselves.
Well, I, I agree with you, but it's not Ms. Peterson. They have NJ SBA has a completely separate wellness, policy check department. And Jean Harkness, I'm mispronouncing her last name.
Yeah.
She's like in charge of it. She's the one who signs everybody up. There was a waitlist back in January because I think, you know, every now and then, like when you attend the NJ SBA meetings, the county meetings or, you know, whatever governance meetings, things like that, they'll say, you should go get a policy wellness check. And that's like every three months, they'll report that out and then they get like an influx of people saying, oh, we want a policy wellness check. That, that's, I'm assuming what happened. There was just another meeting, the, the Essex County meeting where they reported that out again. I'm sure they had an influx, but there is an, there's an entire department in NJ SBA devoted to that. It's not just Charlene.
That's the case. I support you fully being as loud and assertive as possible.
Me well enough to know that. That's, that's something I do well.
I don't think we're relying solely on them. I think there is just another piece of the puzzle of all of us going, going through that process.
Yeah. And just one more note on policy. The district is coming up on, I think it's next year. The comprehensive equity plan is due and that has a slew of policies and regulations that are part of that. And also in two years, you'll be in CUSAC again. So, and that was the last time I think that a lot of policies were looked at. So, you know, en masse. So you're going to have a couple of big benchmark items that are going to rely heavily on, on that policy review.
And one of the policies that's going to become very important very quickly is the student representative to the board of Ed.
And that'll be.
So, yep. So we are.
I'm sorry. To touch up on that, won't Verona's achievement scores make it likely that our CUSAC will just be self-reporting and, and not actually have a site visit?
So I can tell you that in Essex County, what they've been doing is the majority of it is the virtual desk audit, but they have been coming out to do the facilities piece and also some of the fiscal and some of the ed piece. So, you know, they're doing not as much as they used to do with the big bins and all of that, but, but it, they are doing part of it now. They've been getting back into school districts because you know, we've been getting reports back from doctors, Mr. Zara, our executive county superintendent about how that process is going in the districts that are under CUSAC this year.
If there's no more comment and discussion on community resources, did finance meet? And that's Mr. Day and Mr. Walker?
Yes, we did.
I came late to the meeting. So yes, I would love you to do it.
You came on time, I think, but you left early. So Mr. Walker never shows up late for anything. To move forward, the finance committee, health plan renewal, Doc, Mr. Cruz. I want you to be a doctor, but you gotta, you gotta work on that. But Mr. Cruz mentioned the health plan renewal with Brown and Brown and with AmeriHealth. The insurance renewal, again, being proactive, we're renewing our CFC cyber, cyber insurance, which is critical as we all know regarding cybersecurity of our various systems. So the new system, besides having the insurance will require multi-factor authentication effective July 1. So again, that's a critical component to our security and safety. And I assume Mr. Bellage and team are involved in making sure that our systems are safe and secure. Pomtonian, which is, as we know, is our food service organization. We have new rates from them. I'm sure doctors, I mean, here we go again. Mr. Cruz worked hard to make sure that we have the best rates possible from Pomtonian. So the new lunch pricing will be available in August for the next school year. Parchment, I, all I think I knew about parchment was that it was paper that I put fish in. But I didn't realize parchment is actually an organization that helps with high school e-transcripts. So, so really basically what it allows us to do is to have high school students be able to send it to transcripts, working with parchment, minimal dollars setup, which is basically zero dollars. And then it will allow us to be able to have them reach out to parchment directly for future requests. And the graduates and the high school seniors can send out their transcripts through, without having to rely on the guidance department so much. So pretty much automate the process. Anything else to add to that, Mr. Cruz, on the parchment?
So, so no. So I think that, that's definitely something that our director of guidance has been looking into since like the fall and I'm, I'm happy that, you know, we're moving that along and especially as we close up the year, it's definitely going to alleviate some bandwidth from the guidance department. So they don't have to kind of like go and search for these transcripts, et cetera. I think the next phase is looking at automating and, and digitizing the older transcripts that are prior to 2010 where those transcripts are actually manual. So that's something that we're looking into kind of like an RP process. So looking at another vendor to, to see who will be the best proposal to kind of like digitize those older transcripts going back to the years.
Be like unlimited. It's like, is there like a limit? Like you can only get five and then there's a charger. It's like you're applying to 12 colleges for whatever reason and that's how many you get.
So this is more for former students requesting transcripts. So current students, that's something that's still going to be done in-house. So this is more for like education verification and, and requesting, you know, someone, an alumni that actually graduated four years ago, five years ago, that's requesting a transcript. They will go on to our website, click on the, the e-transcript link. It'll take them to parchment and basically they will be charged a $5 fee. And parchment will be pretty much handling that. That's something that we will alleviate the high school from addressing. But our current students and our most recent graduates, they, those students will continue handling that internally for college applications and, and that process. So that, that's going to be for like former, like a year going back.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I, I know we've talked about this too, also with Mr. Cruz trying to track every dollar that we spend with the district. I know some RFPs went out regarding digital filing service, solar and banking services. And one of our discussions was about solar options, about doing more, a deeper dive with our new director of facilities. And really just sort of understanding that project, sort of what's been going on other districts. Viability of a solar project with our new roofs that were done with the referendum. So again, that's still an investigation and I know our director of facilities is, is monitoring that and checking with his contacts. And the last thing was the wellness fair that is going to be taking place on December, November 30th and December 1st. Each employee can earn wellness reward points by attending this wellness program that is sponsored by AmeriHealth, I believe, Mr. Cruz. And I guess the one other item that I brought up to the board today was regarding the, the council meeting. So I watched the council meeting last night. Always, you know, good to watch the council, understand what's going on with an organ, the other folks in our town and some of the important things that go on in the, you know, Verona and in our district. Because it does impact us both ways. One of the things that came up regarding our fields and the great job that our, the maintenance folks for the town do on the school fields. And by doing that, we allow this, the town recreation departments and other different, different organizations in the town to be able to use the school facilities. And something came up about a shared services agreement. I know that's come up before in the past where we've talked about having a formalized shared service agreement. I believe that was presented to the town. And so we're going to look at some of the old, older shared services agreement, see what was, you know, offered in place at that time. And see if we can, you know, look at that as an option to sort of put in, you know, in writing about that relationship. Because end of the day, it's all coming out of the same pair of pants, so to speak. Yeah, but you have two different pockets. And I, I think I'm quoting Kevin Ryan, former mayor that always talked about the pants with two pockets. Because end of the day, it's all coming out of the same budget. So we, we, we're very happy to be able to work with the council. And I think putting a, a simple shared services agreement in place would be great. So.
I think this is sort of piggyback off of that. And, you know, this is something I had mentioned to Mr. Day too, is that this is definitely something we can bring back, you know, to our facilities meeting next month, our committee meeting. But I think going along with that shared services contract is also looking at floodwater management. And I know the township at their council meeting had the Rutgers students present their analysis of that in our town. And it's something the town struggles with tremendously. And in looking at our shared services agreement, especially with recreation, I know from a personal level, you know, my kids get impacted every weekend when they try to play softball at Brookdale. It's consistently ruined. It's consistently unplayable. And not a lot is because of this floodwater management issue that we're going to be facing increasingly over the next, you know, next, you know, 25 years or even much shorter term than that. So I think as we're having this discussion more and more about the shared services agreement, that that needs to be part of that conversation as well.
All we have for our report.
Any other?
He gave me, he gave me kudos.
Any other questions or comments regarding that? Okay, so at this point, we're going to open the floor to public comments on agenda action items. So if there's anything in the resolution packet that we will be taking action on tonight and you would like to comment on that, now would be that time. And not seeing any. We're going to move on to discussion items. The only thing that I want to mention at a discussion item is I want to congratulate. The only thing that I want to mention at a discussion item is I want to congratulate Dr. Moriello. We had an announcement go out to the district, but I definitely think it's worthy of more congratulations and accolades to him. He was named the NJASA 2022 Special Education Administrator of the Year. And he was able, he was doing a presentation at a conference and he was able to accept this award as well. And it just points to the dedicated and high level and professionalism and engagement of the people that we have working for our students in Verona. It's really, it's a great, great honor. So Dr. Moriello, he's usually sitting there. He's not so, but.
Dr. Moriello is still out celebrating his award.
He had a great success with the the mental health and wellness fair. He's been doing, he does amazing things. So just congratulations to him. And I also wanted to mention, and if I get the number wrong, I apologize, but Verona High School was also mentioned in the rankings of US News when they do the ranking of the high schools. And we ranked 44th in the state. Was was that correct? It was 44th in the state, but we were also in the top 15, I want to say percent in the country. So that went out to the public as well. And it's just worthy of noting again, for a very small, relatively small district, our student engagement, the work that we get done, our administrators, our teachers, our faculty, right down to our custodial staff, like it's a well-oiled machine. And are there challenges? Absolutely. Can we always strive to do better? I believe that we do. But we get recognized and it's just amazing. And with the recognition, I believe Mrs. Droppi attended the middle school battle, the music in the parks. So if you want to comment on that too, like kudos to our music department, it's unbelievable.
So we really are lucky to have, in my humble opinion, the greatest music department in New Jersey. Verona has had a history of winning at music competitions, and this was no exception. Our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band students, jazz band and chorus students went down to Middletown South High School and Middletown North High School to compete. And they not only showed professionalism and respect that we expect out of all of our students, especially when we travel as representatives of Verona, but they won. They won it all. And they deserved every second of those accolades. They played and sang their hearts out. And I don't know that there was really a dry eye in that room, watching them compete for the first time in, I mean, what was it, two years? And you know, the credit really goes to Mr. Mikulowski, Mr. Halpern and Ms. Hamilton, who really push our students to not only, you know, play as well as they do, but to really develop a true love for their craft and push our students to work so hard at what they do. And it showed. And I was so pleased to be able to go on that trip and I can't wait to do it for the next few years, if my daughter will let me. Yes, I congratulate, but I had, I had one more update if I could for the board. I attended the mandatory governance three training, because this is my third year on the board. And that is student achievement. And it was actually given by Vince Salucia, who did our anti-bias training, and he's just a wonderful presenter. And a couple of highlights from there that I wanted to present to the board. And it's funny because he opened with, was the first question was talking about policy. And he said, well, you really need a wellness check. So I was like, oh, check did that. Or trying to at least. He really focused on this idea that by 2035, experts estimate that 38% of all jobs will be automated. And how districts need to start thinking now about how are we going to shift our curriculum to best prepare our students? Not only for careers with jobs that may be automated, but also careers for some of the jobs that really cannot be automated, or at least yet. And those were, you know, the trade jobs, plumbing, electricians, construction. And I think this really speaks to the data that we saw today with the CTE. And you know, how our district is already looking to improve enrollment in those courses through work-study programs and how you know, our guidance department can sort of reevaluate how we're promoting those programs as well for students and that four-year colleges are not necessarily the right thing for everybody. And we need a balanced approach when we are looking at what our kids are going to be doing post-graduation. And that was really like the biggest focus of the entire piece of student achievement. And you know, what are we looking at achievement-wise? Are we focusing as a district on scores? Are we focusing on post-secondary information? And we've talked about this before, like who's going to college? Where are they going to college? Is it a four-year? Is it a two-year? Are they finishing it? Which is, I still think that data that's missing from that report that we saw today. And then who's going to trade schools? He spoke at length about job fairs, dividing and conquering, specifically visiting historically back colleges and universities and local schools. And then he really said focus on post-high school education as more than just associates, professional certifications, trade programs, apprenticeships, and career clusters. One last thing that he spoke about that raised a lot of questions and he and he, you know, was able to give some really good answers was the NJASBA has testified to the state of New Jersey and is pushing to eliminate the teacher testing requirement. So I I had a hard time hearing him when he named that test. I know when I took it, it was the praxis, but it's something different now.
Yeah, so it wasn't the praxis, it was the, there's a program that teachers have to complete or had to. And they, I believe that the legislators are either, it's either partway through legislation, I don't know where it's, it's, so it's on its way to being eliminated. It was a portfolio, very time-consuming, very so detailed that it was detracting. Some, for some students were concentrating so much on that that they weren't getting out of their coursework, what they really needed to get out of their coursework. So I think it was a very comprehensive experiment. Not so sure it was as beneficial as higher ed.
Right. He did say that that was all part of New Jersey looking to relax teacher requirements to help with the teacher shortage. And they're looking to pass that legislation as quickly as possible. And NJASBA is there regularly to testify and to push the, to push legislators to make those decisions quickly because they're hearing from boards that they're really, that the struggle is real. Yeah, and that that was it for the update. It really was.
Yeah, so to to piggyback on that as well, on May 14th, I attended the NJASBA delegate assembly. And they spoke about that there as well. So it's definitely being something that's talked about and and pushed forward. And what they talked about as well is Dr. Feinside, who is the executive director, has retired and they introduced the new executive director, which is Dr. Fornell. So we'll be seeing him. And the last Essex County Board meeting, we had four board members attend, one virtually, three of us in person. And those are always interesting because you got legislative updates, you get to get out of our own echo chamber and network with other boards and meet people. So it's always an interesting opportunity.
I mean, I was going to mention about the Essex County School Boards. It was just, it's just nice to meet other districts and see that they have some similar challenges and, you know, not that they're just around the corner from us and just had some good banter, but also the updates for the field, updates about legislative type stuff is was critical and just very enlightening. So again, happy to attend and hopefully I'll have more of those to attend in the future. Nice to be able to see everybody out there wearing a mask. We could all.
Yeah, just.
Not, you know, six feet apart.
And then I think, I don't, I don't know if we mentioned it publicly, but Mrs. Prisco and I also attended one of those Army educator tours that New Jersey School Boards runs periodically. We're the only state in in the United States that has a formal relationship with the Army. And they talk about different pathways. So when we're talking about the CTE and different career options, again, military, not for everybody, but we historically have a couple of students each year that either go to a military academy or do enlist. And they have a lot of helpful information. And they also have programs that can push out into middle school doing STEM and different kinds of competitions. So, you know, Mrs. Prisco and I had a really interesting and informative day there. And again, you're networking with people from all over the state. So it's always an interesting go. And with that, if there's
I just think we just got to also, when we're doing our strategic planning, philosophically kind of at least acknowledge that if if we're going to be pushing, you know, the the vote tech, you know, the vocational options and the the service options and not necessarily having to go to a four-year college, then then we don't get the US News World Report Bronze Medal or Silver Medal or that stuff. Like those are, they're they're not aligned, right? So like we, we, we gotta just kind of understand like we're either this or that, or we're going to do both, but we're not going to let any award be to do something that we celebrate because we we know who we are. So I think that's something that we really should really kind of put into perspective when we, when we plan that.
And at this point, we will move on to resolutions. And I need a motion to approve resolutions number one through 18.
The moved.
Second, Mr. Day and second by Mrs. Prisco. And is there any discussion on any of those one through 18? No. Okay, if not, Mr. Cruz, can we please do the roll call?
Mr. Walker?
Just want to make sure I'm not on there for the school, my school boards trip, am I? All right. So that's going to be the next board meeting, the one that you signed me up for to go to.
Oh, yes.
Okay, very good. So then, yes, I vote yes for everything.
Bay?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Droppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
We have quorum motion passed.
Okay, thank you. We also have addendum resolutions. I need a motion to accept the addenda resolution number one through six.
So move.
Move by Ms. Prisco.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Droppi. And is there any discussion on the addenda items? Okay, if not, Mr. Cruz, can you please do the roll call?
Sure. Mr. Walker? Mr. Bay?
Yes.
Mrs. Droppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freski?
Yes.
We have quorum motion passed.
Great. And then at this point, I would invite anybody in the public to come up and you can make comments on any topics that you would like us to take under consideration. And just please state your name and address. Three minutes, you know the drill.
You thought I'd sit here all day and not say anything. Hi, Denise Frizzella, 130 Personette Avenue. Actually, it was Dr. Fernardi's presentation that made me think of this. When we were talking about the OG certified or trained teachers that we have in district, I think she said is about 18. If, for those who don't know, OG is geared towards children who have dyslexia, children with a very specific type of learning disability. It is an excellent program for all children, but that is really what the focus of the program is. The teachers that were trained through this program were primarily general education teachers. Meaning that if a child who has dyslexia is not in a general education classroom with an OG certified teacher, she does not have access to that. It is possible in Verona for a child to be diagnosed with dyslexia in first grade, go all the way through elementary school and through middle school and not have access to an OG certified teacher. They can go, there are resource room teachers, there are reading specialists, there are replacement English teachers, and it is possible for a child to go and have replacement services in elementary school, replacement services in 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 middle school and never have an OG certified teacher, even though they are diagnosed with dyslexia. But we have speech therapists that are OG certified. We have general education teachers that are OG certified. It seems like although the idea behind the program was a good one, getting all these teachers to be certified and having them be available to our students is great. The focus on who received this training was skewed. I I don't know how it was done. I don't know who was chosen. I don't know if they volunteered, paid for, whatever. But to have a child sit for seven years after being diagnosed with dyslexia and never receive services that they should have received is a tragedy. And it's something that shouldn't happen in a school district that has so many qualified certified teachers. So that was really it. So thank you.
Thank you for bringing that point up.
Hi, Laura Silagato, 31 Grove Avenue. I have a second grader at F and Brown and an incoming kindergartner in the fall and a six-month-old who will be there in a couple of years as well. So I just have a few questions and comments in regards to class sizes and overcrowding in the schools. Looking in the short term, I would like to advocate for at least the incoming kindergarten class at F and Brown to have three sections. I've advocated this several times with the building principal and have asked why, when they already have at least 47 enrolled, they're not planning for the very real possibility that they're going to need a third section, meeting that 25 maximum capacity. Last week, I emailed Dr. Lanzo and Dr. Fernari with questions about what barriers there are to opening that third section. Seeing that the outgoing fourth grade class has three sections, my assumption would be that we already have the staff and space for three sections for kindergarten. And I received answers to what those barriers are. I only got the same answer that I've been given, which is that the numbers are just being monitored. So I'd like to know if there's any reasons for not creating a third section right now. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I think we can all agree that smaller class sizes is beneficial for both the students and our teachers. Most of the classrooms in F and Brown have very large class sizes of like 22 to 25. Yet some of the other schools are having class sizes of 15, 16, 17. So there's a lot of inequity between the schools. And I know that comes with having neighborhood schools. But in the, both in class sizes and experiences the students are getting, I'm hoping that the board, the superintendent will step in to ensure that our students are getting equal experience both in the classroom and in the extra things that are happening in the individual schools that make the school year special. This was brought off by a parent in the last meeting and the response, one of the responses was that we as parents can request a transfer to another school. I'm not going to pull my kid out of the school that she loves, with the teachers that she loves, with all her friends. That's not a solution to this problem because that would just be one child. So I'm really looking to see what the planning is moving forward. I I'd like to ask what the board's plan is in the long term to address overcrowding in our schools. We know Verona is a sought-after town. There are several construction projects coming up in town that's going to add more students to our population. I looked at the strategic plan. I didn't see that this was being addressed in the current strategic plan. With the, so with the new superintendent coming on, I wanted to know if the strategic plan will be revised to address this problem. And lastly, just looking at the strategic plan on the website, I didn't see any current written updates on the progress of things. I know you give updates in the meetings, but I had, I couldn't find anything that was actually written down. So you can either point me in the right direction, or if that information could be updated and put on the website, that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
For those comments.
If I could comment in the first part of her advocacy, I I believe that if spacing is not an issue, I'm hopeful that the district could look to add a third. I'm hopeful that the district could look to add a third kindergarten class. And I think the main reason for me is that we got to look at who, who these kids are, and there are kids that, for the most part, didn't get a proper preschool or perhaps even daycare setting, because the daycare or the preschool is probably closed because of the pandemic. And I could tell you, just firsthand, real experience, I'm sure Sarah would agree, we saw behaviors all around the state exhibited by kindergarteners that we'd never really seen before because of that lack of structure. And to no fault of anyone's, it's COVID's fault, right? But with a district that, because we weren't able to open schools for so long, or partially open schools, we did, we were able to bank a lot of money. And I, I think that a smaller kindergarten size, provided that spacing is not an issue, would be something I, I really think is a valid concern. And that's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I just wanted to comment too on the strategic plan. So that will be revised. The current plan is set to fall off in 2023. And we will do an update on where we are. A lot of times those updates are coming through periodically, and they're not necessarily pointed out specifically as part of the strategic plan. But all our committee reports, everything that gets done and is reported out, the agendas, I think, get uploaded so the public can see them, and they're always attached to one of the goals or action plans within the strategic plan. So, and then you see the outcomes. So it's, like you said, it's not really obvious. You do have to dig around a little bit for it. And then when the new strategic plan, that'll be under the new superintendent. And that really is a community-wide effort. So stay tuned, because we do try to reach the largest swath of community members, of parents, teachers, educators, people who don't have children in the school district, because it does impact our whole community. So that really is an important piece, and that will absolutely be addressed coming up. And I understand the frustration, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Walker, too, about, about the sizes. But I also understand from the principal's perspective, May, June, July, a lot of houses are sold, people move out as their kids age out, people move in, people are still shifting around. So they are monitoring the numbers closely, so I do get it.
I have a quick question, Phil, for Dr. Fernari. Is there like a cutoff date in the summer where the district will go, "Okay, it's the state, yes, we're going to need another teacher," or "That's it, we're keeping the two sections"?
Usually, you don't want to leave yourselves in a position where you can't hire a teacher and set up a classroom, so certainly. But one thing that happens, especially in kindergarten, the numbers that we have in each of the school enrollments currently don't necessarily include where, if there are students who are going to be served in another way. So at each grade level, for example, I mean, I may have, I have certain grade levels that are at 24 and 24, or are at 23 and 24, or at, you know, so, and, and it's not just kindergarten, it's any grade. So we are, we know that there are a lot of developments, not only with people moving in and out, but with also with new evaluations coming up and how that affects enrollment and class size. So this is why I say, you know, I know it sounds tenuous when we say we're monitoring, but we really are, and we have to look at each of those events to make sure that, you know, that we have the right number. It's not that we are opposed to opening another section in those grade levels, but we really have to make sure that, you know, that we're in a place where we can. I will say that, you know, we've got... I bug the principals every single, for their numbers. They're probably so tired of hearing from me. But this, we have a spreadsheet that is continually updated, and Dr. Moriello continually updates the special education numbers as well. So we are working on it. It's not something that we're just leaving to chance or leaving to the end of the summer. We want to make sure that we have, get it right.
It is re, like, is rezoning an option? I feel like, because, and maybe this is just from what I hear from the public, but like, and because, you know, we're on the landing area, but F&amp;Brown always seems like it's bursting at the seams. And, you know, I work in a trailer district, right? We have trailers, and it's just not something I want for my school district. I don't, I mean, is that on the table, or?
So, you know, and I can give you some generalities, but they probably, you know, some of these things may not be palatable to Verona. So when you think about redistricting, you know, you've got one big barrier running right down the middle of town, and that's Bluefield Avenue, and that really impacts on where kids are zoned right now. We also know that we value and love our neighborhood schools. So, you know, in some districts, what they'll do is they'll grade-level group schools. You know, you put your K2s in one building, your 35s in and up, that kind of thing. That, that is a huge change for everybody, and not something necessarily you can do unless you then become a busing district, which we are not, right? So there's that. On the flip side of FNB being the school that seems to have more children than, than anyone expects, right? You've also, on the flip side, you have a school that is so much smaller in Brookdale. And although their kindergarten is another one that's pretty, pretty up there, it's about 23 or 24 right now, as far as enrollment looks, as of this week. So their issue has always been, in some grade levels, there's only one grade, you know, one class. And so what do you do to help with a situation where, you know, you keep losing a grade, a class in one grade, gaining it in another or not? Teachers are, they tend to trolley with their kids over several grade levels. Sometimes that's great, sometimes it's not. You know, there, so there are a lot of issues that if you, if you entertain other ways of moving kids from one school to another. For example, one thing you may want to consider in the future, and, and, you know, Steve Giuseppe may, may say, "Fernari, don't open your mouth." But, you know, you could pick a date by which you say, anybody who moves into town before, you know, after this date, they automatically go to the school with the smallest enrollment in that grade level. You know, you can think about those kinds of things. You know, there are strategies you can use, but, you know, that's something that the board and the administration really have to think about and make some hard decisions about. So, you know, there, there are choices out there that, that need to be made in order for some of the things that you're experiencing to be alleviated, I think.
To the last part of your question, about the long term, so you, you mentioned developments. The town council is going to receive something called pilot funds, which they're under no obligation to share with the district. However, other, other towns have shared a percentage of the pilot funds, you know, with their local school district, because they're going to add more houses, more kids. Now, it's a more of a burden on the school district. I know every politician will tell you that they love children, but we just need people in our community to really press them on that, and to put their money where their mouth is, and look to, look to share with our district, because it's the same, I think, you know, it's going to help everybody if they do that. And we've seen other towns, even local towns, do that. So we need to keep respectfully, but, but putting that pressure into town to do right by our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Is there any other closing that anybody wants to add? So if not, we are going to adjourn the meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Drapi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Day. And before I officially close, I just want to say our next meeting is June 7th, Tuesday, with confidential at 6:00 PM, with our public session at 7:00 PM.
Now, we're back at the high school, right?
And we are back at the high school on June 7th, correct.
It's election day.
And we're, and we're at, we're still in the auditorium?
Yep, we're still in the auditorium. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 9:05. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.